So I will call the meeting to order at 6:19 PM. We don't have a quorum, so we can't review and accept the agenda. We will move to communication and support to the board. 2.8 Superintendent's informational report, as soon as I find that. Yeah, okay, so just a couple of FYIs. Assuming we don't have any additional snow days, knock on wood. The last day of school for this school year is scheduled for June 12th, with the last day for staff occurring on June 14th. Got graduations listed out there. Nashaby on the 6th, OCA on the 7th, Lothrup on the 10th, and Otter Valley on Saturday, the 15th. You can also grab ahold of the education legislative report, if you follow the links online. But really what's happening at the legislative level is all tied to school funding, if we're being honest, right? So one of the big ones right now, we know unfortunately ad nauseam is H-850, and that's the rug that was pulled out from all of us, which is the law that repealed the transition mechanism within Act 127. So that still is sort of hopping right now. Act 82 is an act related to specifically allowing municipalities to be reimbursed for flooding damage, which seems like it's great news, except just as sort of an FYI, they're estimating that Act 82 will cost the ed fund over a million dollars in fiscal year '24. School construction aid, we've talked about it before. It continues to be a big deal, both because the state and districts and supervisory unions are really considering aging infrastructure and what that impact is. So they're working to really understand comprehensively what is happening in each of the districts and the buildings. They're establishing a facilities master plan grant program that they're suggesting is administered by the Agency of Education. So a little bit more detail on that will be coming at a later date. It will also establish a state aid for school construction working group, and it will temporarily halt PCB testing in our schools, mostly because they don't have the capacity to keep up with the testing schedule, and also because the dollars that they set aside to help districts and schools with remediation is empty. So that's not overly helpful. We talked about this a couple of months ago, when I was talking about big things to be aware of. Literacy is a Senate education priority. It also is the task force who was sort of slated to name the next Secretary of Education. Literacy was their number one, like sort of big deal. We still don't, after a year, have a named Secretary of Education. But at this point, Senate Ed is sort of creating two bills that are seeking to improve student literacy outcomes. Another big one, sort of on the docket, we've talked about it a lot. Kevin talks about it a lot, CTEs, Senate Bill 304. And the thing to really pay attention to with this bill is it's expanding pre-tech and exploratory programs with a mandate that schools and districts will provide genuine opportunities to participate in pre-tech and exploratory technical courses for students in grades 6 through 8. If it passes, I mean, they're out of money, right? So no one really knows what that's going to look like. But if it passes, it will also force supervisory unions and districts to develop a comprehensive career development policy. So again, an unfunded mandate, stay tuned for more. H-630 is a pretty interesting one, that has a lot of sort of concept or theoretical support right now. If you know anything about, say, education in New York, they have a program called BOCs, right? And so BOCs really allows you to have cooperative education services. So for instance, if OCA is too small to maybe get their own full-time nurse, you might be able to partner with, say, Ripton and share nursing services, right? So they're talking about developing a BOCs model similar to New York in Vermont. Again, I think there's some really good reasons for the intent of it. Everyone's sort of wondering about the infrastructure or the unforeseen consequences. If you are talking about shared staff, who's managing shared staff? Who's really in charge of it? Who's paying what? The assessments, the bill backs, Brenda's going to love it. So sort of stay tuned with that. The bill outlines the process for creating BOCs in the governance structure, but the financing, the reporting, all of those are still completely vague and really not responded to at all at this point. We've talked about Senate Bill 284, which was the cellphone policy. So stay tuned, that has, in each of its iterations, it shifted a little bit. But they're going to end up, no matter what, developing a model policy for cellphone and personal electronic devices. We already have one, so that's not a huge deal for us. And then we've also talked about, the Senate government operations has talked about mandating hybrid meetings for every single meeting that happens in the state of Vermont, which has the potential to actually be sort of a pain in a lot of ways. If you want to have a special meeting, you can't get everyone together, and you only want to do an emergency virtual meeting, this would prevent you from doing that. Alternatively, if you want to, for instance, have an annual meeting and say, "We're only going to let people show up in person because we want to engage with people in person," this bill would sort of prevent you from doing that. So the bill is saying that you have to do both, sort of no matter what, and you have to warn it that way. Stay tuned. But I think that's really it for me. Sokas.
She's been slower.
All right. Brenda, what are we doing? What am I sharing?
Yes, quickly. So in your supplemental documents, there was a document that was titled OVU, Overview of All Funds, Including Non-Trust Funds. And it excludes the general fund. So we talk a lot about the general fund, that's the budget. So this is not talking about that at all. So the first thing in this document, it's page 36 of the supplementals, right? 36 or 37?
Yep, 36.
So first, it's just kind of a definition of the different funds that we have and what they mean from an accounting standpoint. So special revenues funds are established to account for the proceeds of a specific revenue source, not counting a fiduciary fund, that are legally restricted or expended for a specific purpose. So we have four of those, and their balances as of June 30th are listed. One was a Partner for Prevention, and that's a grant where we're still waiting for reimbursement from Rutland Regional Medical Center. Again, this is as of June 30th. The other one was an ARPA Child Care Grant, where we spent all but seven cents.
Seventy.
So have to figure out what to do with that seven cents. The other one is the After-School Fund, which you hear about a lot because we talk about it pretty soon, sometime in May, when we're talking about if we have projected surpluses, where we might put those funds, whether we would put them in the After-School Fund or the Facility Fund. It is a nice, healthy balance of about $644,000. That was as of June 30th, where the beginning of the year. We do tap into it to the tune of about $80,000 a year to support our after-school and summer programming. So that also means that our after-school and summer programming is not covered by the general fund budget. It's covered by these resources.
Was that part of the Century 21 grant?
A hundred years ago, it started with LEAP and 21st Century.
21st Century, and then, okay, that's cool.
But has kind of...
But that was the intent of that grant, anyway, was to build that.
To be sustainable, and we are.
That's awesome.
And then the last one is the Rowan Fund, and that was, Devin Karpak applied for it. He's a Rowan Fellow. That's the amount of that grant. It was $100,000 to support his work and research in tech ed and how to incorporate it. And I'm not an expert in the Rowan Fund. But it's been used to help cover staff for him, so that he can do the research, he can go and visit other sites and learn about how other people might be doing those programs. The next one, we all know very intimately because we talk about it every year, in May, and September, and December, and January, and February. And that's the Capital Fund. So the Capital Projects Fund was established to account for the resources for capital or major construction. So this would never cover something like a custodian or desks and chairs. It's going to cover things that are capital improvements for buildings and grounds. So it might cover removing a floor and putting in a whole new floor, but it wouldn't cover a $100 carpet rug, something like that. And again, as of June 30th, the balance was $2,265,000. When we merged, we each had multiple, when we were independent districts, we each had our own little fund. Goshen had $8,000. There's the only one that still exists because we haven't determined how to spend that, and honestly, it is one that's kind of hard to spend because it does need to be spent for school services. Kind of eyeing it for the Bell Tower at Nashaby, dedicating it to the town of Goshen. But that's that.
So what do you mean by it has to be spent on services?
Has to be spent for school. There's no school in Goshen.
Oh, I understand that, but can it be any school?
Yes, it can be. The residents of Goshen don't want it to be just any school, but...
I got you. But also, do the residents of Goshen have to weigh in on that one?
And then we have permanent funds, and these are used to account for assets held by the school that are really restricted for a non-school purpose. So it's not our money to be used as we see fit or want. We are really more of a fiduciary. We're responsible for capturing it, maintaining it, using it according to the specified purposes, and continuing it. So for us, the majority of those are scholarship funds. And you can see right down here, the total amount of scholarship funds as of June 30th were $40,606. And then you can see each of the funds that accounted to that, to make that $40,000. And then the last are fiduciary funds, and these are used to account for resources held for the benefit of parties outside the school district. They're not reflected in the financial statements. And the only one count we have is the Eckley Button Memorial Fund. And that one, we're allowed to spend the interest earnings on that $12,000 fund to buy library books at Nashaby.
Just that.
Just that.
Thank you. Okay. Well, seeing as we got two members, now we have a quorum. Let's go back. Can I get a motion to review and accept the agenda?
I second it.
All those in favor? Opposed? Super. We've got our oath of allegiance and oath of office taken care of. So the first order of business is to elect a chair. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Lori. I second it.
Are there any other nominations?
We're all reading them out again.
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of Lori Burtrand serving as Chair of the OBU School Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, turning it over now. You don't want to keep going?
Do not.
Okay, all right. Next item up for bid is our Vice Chair. Do I have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Natalie Steen for Vice Chair.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none. And all those in favor of electing Natalie Steen as Vice Chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Natalie. Okay, time to elect a Chair, or Clerk, sorry. Any nominations for Clerk? Our current Clerk is Barbara.
I nominate Barbara. Second.
Okay. Any other nominations for Clerk? Okay, all of those in favor of Barbara being our Clerk, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Barbara. You remain the Clerk. All right. We need to appoint reps to the RNESU Parabus Driver, Bus Monitor, Custodian Negotiations Committee. Did anybody notice that that might be a little bit longer title than it used to be?
I don't think I read to the end of the title.
Okay, well, so the title used to be just the parabus drivers. So they have met and decided to include their bus monitors and their custodians, and so that means that we need to reopen negotiations with the parabus drivers now monitoring, bus monitors and custodians, and reopen negotiations. So we are looking for board members to join that committee in order to reopen and settle a new contract with them. Anyone interested? So what I should also tell you is that this committee is of RNESU in Otter Valley. Barstow is not a member of this negotiating committee. Well, we need someone, and usually on our committee is Lisa Kenyon, but she's no longer in the district, so I don't know if that makes sense. And other members of the committee were this past time. I don't remember who else they were.
Oh, I think that was your rep.
Is that it? Okay.
Was it Becky?
Becky had been on it in the past, yeah. But she's no longer on the board. Well, sort of. We'll get to that.
Do we have to do it now?
Well, we really need to reopen negotiations as soon as possible because they are now working without a contract, essentially, right? Or...
Well...
We don't know.
Yeah, and we have a meeting on the 27th.
I can do it if no one wants to do it.
Thank you. I don't even think we need to take a nomination for that. I think Brett...
It's appointment.
Yeah, it's just an appointment, okay.
The good news is it's virtual, Brett.
Hopefully, we'll get someone from the RNESU Board also to join, maybe someone who's not on the Board to join the committee as well. So, okay, thank you, Brett, for doing that. We need to appoint three board members to the RNESU Board. I would take nominations for those seats.
I nominate Lori Burtrand.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, other members? Natalie, did you have your hand raised?
I'm going to nominate Barbara.
Okay. Is there a second for Barbara? Okay, thank you. And the third member?
I nominate Kevin.
Is there a second? Okay.
Is this for empty seats?
This is for, no, this is for the RNESU Board. So currently, we have to reorganize, and so Barbara and I were already on that board, and then Becky was on that board, and she, of course, is not running any, or she got off the board, so we need a third member. Okay, any other nominations?
Who seconded?
Okay, well, there's only three, so by decree, congratulations. All right.
We'll see you tomorrow night, 5:00 PM.
That's right, virtually, 5:00 PM. We need to appoint a Stafford Tech Center Advisory Board Rep. Currently, that is Kevin.
You're still interested, right, Kevin?
Yeah, I actually like it.
I nominate Kevin.
Okay, is there a second? Natalie? Any other nominations? Hearing none, congratulations, Kevin. All right. Communications with parent citizens and staff. I don't believe...
They all left. Those are just staff and newspaper online.
Okay, all right. And no one is here to speak to us?
Nope.
Okay, moving on. Consent Agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
All right, is there a second? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, any abstentions? Consent Agenda, yay, here we go. Our next point of order is, what time is it?
6:00.
All right, we've got some time. So why don't we go ahead and do the board monitoring report? We probably have time. It's just a good time to do the Members' Code of Conduct. That is in your packet. We did go over this last year about this time, and we took out anything that was in relation to a conflict of interest. So this is specifically only code of conduct.
Can you just tell me the page in the package, just?
I would, but I don't know.
31, I think? 31, 32?
31?
31, yeah.
31, all right. 31 to 33.
Okay, thank you.
Other than changing the time period that we're monitoring, is there anything that anybody wants to add, subtract, talk about? Also, while we're talking about that, Conflict of Interest Form was sent to everybody by Melinda. Please get that back to her, if you haven't done that already. Have you got anything? Okay. All those that approve Policy 4.5, Board Members' Code of Conduct, please... We didn't even, no.
It doesn't have to.
We don't have to, you're right.
Okay.
We don't. Okay. Code of Conduct is done. All right, so Annual Meeting and Election Debrief, Fiscal Year '25 Budget Next Steps. So as you know, the budget failed a week or so ago, two weeks ago. And so now, I'm going to turn it over to you as to where... Do you want it turned over to you, or do you want to... I can talk about the next steps that I know of, but you guys might have more steps to...
Want to talk about the timeline, and then I'll do this?
Sure. This is my timeline. So what we would recommend, well, a couple of things. First, know that although RNESU, although RNESU is not voted on by the taxpayers, RNESU meets tomorrow, and its central offices certainly prepared to have a conversation with the RNESU Board members about opening that budget as well. And if that budget decreases, obviously, that will impact the assessments, right? So that would naturally sort of bring down the OBU budget marginally, but would bring it down. So that's one thing to know. What we're asking for from you, before I turn it over to Brenda, are really sort of parameters, right? We saw that the budget was defeated by a pretty hefty margin, sort of similar to what also happened in the town. Numbers are usually higher when we have a primary, which we did. So we certainly anticipate the second budget vote not necessarily having the same number of people show up and vote, but what historically happens on a second vote are, people come out either because they are strong yeses in support of the school budget, or strong no's for the school budget. So, you know, don't really think it's necessarily, the fact that there isn't a primary in the revote is going to help us any. What we are proposing is that we get, that this evening, you set forward some parameters for us to go back to our administrative team, sort of, you know, saying, "We want you to be able to reduce the budget by this amount, or we want you to sort of consider these sort of things." So that we, when we come back to the next regularly-scheduled Otter Valley Board meeting, which is on Tuesday, April 2nd, that we will have that budget ready for you to go, ready to go for you. Then it would be our hope that the week of April 8th, which you don't currently have a meeting, so wait, let me back up. If we present it to you, and that makes sense, you could accept the budget, and we could warn it after that point. So that would happen on April 2nd. If it didn't happen, meaning we presented you the budget, you didn't love it, you had more questions, the legislators changed something again, that we would ask that there was a special meeting the week of April 8th to be able to warn it in time for us to have informational meetings the week after April break and be able to get the budget revo on Tuesday, April 30th. And just a couple of, and it might feel a little rushed, but just sort of just some background information for folks. If this budget goes down and it's apt, so our RIF, our notification of reducing teachers and support staff, goes out on March 15th, so that already happened. But naturally, when our budget is defeated, it automatically shifts that back to April 15th. That doesn't happen a second time. So if this budget goes down a second time, we can no longer come back to the table and say, "Here are staff that we're proposing that we reduce." Unless we, for instance, thought about laying off a whole bunch of people, hoping that the budget passes, but if it doesn't pass, sort of going back, the danger of doing that is people are going to look for jobs, right? If they get a RIF notification, they're going to be looking for jobs. So just something to be thinking of. This is why we want the timeline, we want this warned, we want it out there, so we're able to tell staff that they are reduced, or we're sort of going to be pulling for them in the second budget. You know, if you're after that April 15th deadline and the budget goes down a second time when we come back to you, and this isn't a threat, this isn't meant, this isn't a scare tactic, but the sort of things that you look for when you can't look at people in programs are transportation, after-school, pre-k athletics, clubs, things like that, things that aren't necessarily tied to those sort of staffing patterns. So that's just sort of the reason why we want to get this second budget out there and warned, sort of ahead of time. I don't know, Brenda, are you sort of ready to just go?
Sure. I mean, the other reason is we have to submit our past budgets to the Agency of Education after the reconsideration period, which is 30 days. So if we have a budget that's passed by May 1st, the 30 days will expire on June 1st. That's the date that we, the first date that we can submit our budget to the Agency of Education, so they can prepare the necessary information to tell the towns what the tax rates are. So the towns are really anxious because they start meeting in July to set their tax rates, and so they really like to have that information so that they can do tax bills. Without that, or if we go later, and we approve later, then that gets pushed back, too.
This isn't a question. I just want to say, before we start the general discussion, that I've been in situations before where people are scared of RIFs, and management is making tough decisions, and it's just awful for everybody. You guys have my sympathy issue. Natalie, please.
So what I'm hoping to tell you or show you with this, and it is hot off the presses, if you want to take one, and if you could present, Kristen, that would be helpful. You know what it really means and where we're at, so I do... I would share with you, but I wouldn't be able to see.
Does this have a magnifying glass?
It probably does.
So this is, you all know, you've seen me here for a long time. I am still spinning from the legislature flipping on their promises. I have not seen them ever do that, and they did that this year. And so that flip has really hurt us. And this is really going to tell you where we're at right now. So if you look at the sheet with the shading on the front, the first column is fiscal year '24, using the new definition of pupils. And I think we've beat this to death. I think everyone understands that that is a new definition that is good in one sense and bad in another. It's good in the sense that it is based on empirical cost data to educate students from various different categories. It's bad that it really loses its connection to the number of real bodies and real students in our school. Not just ours, obviously, it was a statewide thing. So if you look down the first column, fiscal year '24, the current year we're in right now, the actual home state tax rate is $1.20. Our defeated budget, I've updated to House 850's yield, which is $9,775. That is about $300 higher than it was when we printed books, when we went to the voters. And H-50 has been passed, but the yield still hasn't been set. The yield is set in the budget bill, and it's the last thing that legislators do, and they are trying to collect data right now to kind of give an estimate of what that yield might be. So that is still subject to change, but it's the best information we know now. And we're not going to have a better number until they actually set a yield at the end of May, when they close budgets, or when they close for the session. So again, the cap was gone. That was a surprise to us. And with that new yield and the loss of a cap, our budget that was defeated would have had a tax rate of $1.28, or depending on rounding... had a tax rate of $1.28, or depending on rounding, eight to nine cents higher than the current rate. Then there's the common level of appraisal. And as I've said before, and as we've all seen with our neighbors selling their houses, since 2020, the value of houses has increased. And houses are selling quickly, they're moving quickly, and what that means, and they're selling above asking price, starting to slow down now in 2024. But the common level of appraisal is a three-year average that compares the real sales in a town based on what the real value was listed on the grand list in the town. And every one of our towns is significantly below fair market value. That's what the CLA is. So just talking about line one, just for Brandon, what they're saying is Brandon is at 74.69% CLA. So that means a house sold for $100,000 and was sitting on the grand list in Brandon for $76,400. So the state says, "Then we're going to increase your equalized tax rate, your $1.28, up by that 24%, 26%," I'm not good with little numbers, "that undervalue."
So they raise it up because the house sold for more than what was listed?
So that, right, yes.
Out of state is coming in, buy it up for big money and we pay the consequence.
Yes.
It'll all get better because we all out of state is pretty soon, everybody might be living somewhere else.
Yes, and the premise is this, the premise is that your property is worth more, and that's why you should pay more, and the state can't adjust the grand list, so they adjust the other side of the formula, which is the tax rate. But I'll remind you, one times two is two, and two times one is two, right? It doesn't matter which is first or which is adjusted. So the next thing that almost every town in the state has to do is reappraise, because there's a law that says if you drop below 80%, and the coefficient of dispersion below 20, I don't need to jump into that, but if you drop below that 80%, you are required to reappraise. So when it reappraises, our tax rate will look good, but two times one and one times two is still two. Individual taxpayers will go from $100,000, from a $76,000 house to a $100,000 house. So what they're going to pay is still going to be these numbers. Does that make sense?
It won't be our rate.
But it won't be our rate, it will look better because it won't be our rate. This is our biggest problem, not ours at Otter Valley, but as a whole state, this is our biggest problem. So I wanted to, if you go to the next page, oh, wait, one more thing, if you scoot back. A question that is regularly asked of me is, "Well, so how are we to the state, right? We like to be kind of in the nice comfortable middle. We don't want to be too low, we don't want to be too high." So we are about $900 below, per pupil, below this state spending under this new definition. So that last little line, that was the estimate that was used in H-850 as the average state spending per long-term weighted average ADM. So they said the state as a whole spends on average $13,400. Otter Valley proposed $12,562.
And that's person?
That's more than 900, isn't it?
Was that evident to the voters?
It was, it was in, it was in the annual report. There's a lot in the annual report. So if you go to the next page, all right, let's talk about.
That's, that's not per living student, that's per weighted.
That crazy new number, yes. Yes.
Per living student.
Well, per body. Per the student with two legs.
Well.
Okay. All right, so let me tell you a couple of other things that we know, to just put everything into context. So often I'm asked, "Well, what is one cent on the tax rate?" So for Otter Valley, if the yield stayed at House 850 number, $9,775, one cent on the tax rate is $207,000. The budget's 27 million, one cent on the tax rate, $207,000. If you wanted to adjust your budget so that the equalized tax rate stayed the same as it was last year at $1.20, you would have to reduce $1,867,000. That's significant, I wanted you to know that, we wanted you to know that. And if you did reduce that, because of the common level of appraisal, people in Brandon would still pay per $100,000 of house site value, an additional $169,000. People in Goshen would pay an additional $300,000.
Thank you.
And down. So the lowest would be Whiting would pay an additional $150,000. So what I'm really trying to share with you is that draconian reductions are not going to bring us to a zero tax. So then, the defeated budget again is right here. So the defeated budget, 27,247,000, does have tax rates that go up a lot. I know that's scary, per $100,000. So again, for Brandon, that would be 290,000, and the lowest, I think, is Whiting at 287,000. If you scroll up just a little, Kristin. So, if you cut one cent, if you cut 207,000, because you can do this multiplication, if you cut two cents, it would be 207 times two. If you cut one cent, then Brandon's taxes would go down to $276,000 or save $13,000. If you cut 10 cents, or $2,075,000, Brandon's taxes would go down $133,000. The other thing that's there in red is to remind you, the majority of our taxpayers do not pay based on these numbers. The majority of our taxpayers, so I don't know if you can read that, but I'll read it to you. So in 2023, 68% of Brandon households received some property rebate. So they did not pay based on these numbers, they paid based on their personal income. We can't ever explain that to people because it's personal income, so I think we've always kind of relied on this because this is something we can explain, and frankly, a lot of times people think we don't do a good job explaining this. Goshen has 72%. So even though Goshen looks the scariest at $300 per $100,000 of house, 72% of their household, house site owners don't pay based on that number. Pittsburgh is 61, Siberia is 68, Whiting is 72.
But would you, just one question about that, though. That 72% of homeowners don't pay based on that rate, but that doesn't mean that it, they're all the same.
Correct.
Some, you know, some get a little reduction, some get a big reduction, some are in the middle.
Exactly. And the average reduction in all of our towns averaged together, just for giggles, is 1,161. But you're absolutely right, it depends on your income and it depends on your house value. Depends on your income and your house value, what your rebate actually be. Some people will get $4,000, actually, I think it's capped at something. But some people will get a very high number and some people get $32.56, right? So somewhere in the, in the middle. The other thing that I thought was important, if you could scoot up just a little bit more, Kristin, other way.
There's nothing.
I want to get to the tax rate.
Where's that?
Right there. So, this is in the budget, this was in the book. It is a god-awful sheet to read. It's called the three-year sheet, and it's really hard to people to read, so I wanted to just highlight it to you. So what have we been seeing for tax rates? So in fiscal year 22, the tax rate was $1.36 or $1.37. In 23, it was $1.23. In 24, the year we're in, $1.20, $1.21, depending on rounding. And then the budget that was defeated was $1.29, depending on rounding. So that number is what's called an equalized number. That's the number if everybody's sales were selling for what their grand lists were. Those would be the history of our tax rate. That's where we really have control. We don't have control of the neighbors coming in from out of state and buying property and at high rates, or people buying lake property in Burr Pond.
Yeah, Brenda.
So I just kind of wanted to put it in context, I think you guys did a lot of hard work, and we had a lot of, you know, difficult conversations, and we reduced a lot before we went out to vote. And I don't honestly remember if the number was 300,000 or 500, it was a big number that we reduced to get within the cap. You know, the cap is gone, but I just wanted to, just make sure you understand that we can't fix the common level of appraisal problem, for lack of a better word, without being, without really compromising our programs and services.
Reserve fund, will there be a reserve fund?
Will there be what?
A reserve fund, money that?
We do not have a fund, little reserve fund to offset taxes.
I know.
We have an after-school fund and a capital projects.
We would also have to ask the, our constituents if they wanted to have one before we could even put money into something like that.
Right. So there is no?
Right, there is no reserve fund.
No, no resources.
How does the state come up with the yield?
That's a really good question, in theory.
Because it seems like, there's, so I was listening to some of the, of them talking about before they passed H-850, right? And they were talking about numerators and denominators, and they lost me pretty quickly.
Yes.
So it seems like there's a little bit of fuzzy math going on in the background, but it could just be that I don't understand it, that's probably the case, but.
I'll be honest with you, it's a little bit of both, right? So they have to, so the December 1st letter is actually dictated by statute. So they have to look at all of the, they have to make assumptions on what education spending will be, what each of our districts will spend, they make a guess on that. Then they have to look at what's already in their ed reserve and what they think history and actual tax revenues are doing that will feed into the ed reserve, and then from that, they back into a yield. So the more everyone spends, the lower the yield. The less everyone, everyone, collective Vermont, the less we spend, the higher the yield. What happened this year was what every one of you saw right away the first time I told you about Act 127. Well, where are they going to get this money for this little, you know, I call it the buy one, get one free, right? So they said to us, "If you keep your spending within 10%, your tax rate will be held harmless at 5%." So to me, that's like buying something and getting one for 50%. Of course I'm going to buy the 50% one-off, I'm not leaving it on the counter. The legislature was completely surprised that people actually did that. And they had, and we did not do this, but they had a lot of schools that then put a lot of money into deferred maintenance. Please understand, I'm not passing judgment on them because that's real. Buildings are deferred, and eventually, the education fund has to pay for that, and so they, I don't think they did the wrong thing. But ask Kristin, boy, superintendents started warring with each other, and it was not pretty. And then the legislature said, "Oh, well, the school spending is out of control." And they actually honestly did a good job blaming us instead of really owning the fact that they put in a rebate system that you should have held me accountable if I didn't push us to doing, right? So here we are, that didn't answer your question.
I think it did.
So the first yield that they put out was 94.52, after they took back the Act 127 rebates and instead gave what they called discounts to districts who lost buying power.
Wealthy districts.
All districts who lost buying power were wealthy districts because by definition, that means they had less students in poverty, less students from ELL backgrounds, right? So all districts who lost buying power relative to the prior year got a discount. So my neighborhood got a 13-cent discount in Addison. And districts like us, who gained buying power, were stuck with the tax rate.
Brandon would like to ask a question.
A bit simpler than all the math stuff, I'll blame that I'm a math teacher, but I know it was like over three trillion, $3 million increase, but was it just that huge number? Do we know, like, was it just that huge number that voters saw that was the reason they shot down the budget? Or was there another driving force? Like, were they going through the budget like, "Oh, this shouldn't be here, they should cut this," or was it just seeing that huge number?
So wouldn't it be great if we had students who did a post sort of a?
Survey.
Survey. We have, we really don't know. I mean, as Kristin said earlier, first of all, there was unprecedented turnout because it was a presidential primary. There was a lot of media attention to the fact that the Act 127 grants were, or safeties were going away. There was lots of media attention, the education spending is out of control. That's an easy platitude that people just hear and may or may not understand whether it is in our district or not.
The governor came out and said, "I'm voting no on my school budget, I hope you do the same."
Yeah, there was a lot of push to.
He also said that taxes were going to go up 20% everywhere when he had no idea whether that's just a bunch of propaganda.
So we don't really know. It is hard, and that's what I was trying to show. I mean, I don't want to be insensitive, with the common level of appraisal going down, what the state is saying is, "You homeowner, whether you feel it or not, your house is worth more, so now you have to pay more taxes." And that's really what's hurting us the most. Can we reduce our budgets here and there? Of course, right? Everybody has a little bit of flexibility. But if you wanted to really kind of combat that natural property value increase, you're going to hurt our budgets to a huge extent.
But, and this is where it gets confusing, right? Because the cost of education didn't all of a sudden jump 30% when our house values did, right? So that money is going somewhere, whether it's into the fund, and that's where it's weird, like, we, why even include a yield in the modified bill, right? Like, why, because you don't know, they're still just full of shit, so why even include it? I don't know.
So, that's a good question, and that comes back to Act 60. So that comes back to the education funding formula. And so we should be proud of that because that was Whiting, that's the Brigham decision in 1996, where we sued the state and said, "There's unequal funding, and by our Vermont Constitution, kids are entitled to education." And so the legislature said, "Okay, you're right," well, they didn't say that, they lost in court, and then they had to say, "Okay, you're right." So they put together a system that basically says, "We're going to look at it from the state level, and regardless of where your student lives, if you spend the same amount of money, you'll have the same tax rate." Now that has had a couple of iterations, but that's why the yield comes into play. The yield is the same here as it is in Stowe, the same here as it is in Montpelier. And if we spend the same amount, House 850 discounts aside, we have the same tax rate.
So now what you're looking for is parameters from us as to what you want, or what we think we want.
Can we have a community forum? I know some other towns are doing that.
I don't know that we have time. If we, if we want to get this done by April 29th, I don't know that we have time, and I don't know that you'd get a lot of people there.
Maybe not. I think a lot of what we talked about is a driving force for some people, right? But, I mean, I've also heard other things. There was a lot of people upset about changes to foreign language programs or thinking that we should be focusing more on, and everyone's opinion of direct education is a little bit different, right? But, you know, focusing more on the teacher positions and maybe less on some of the support staff. Now, we know that the support staff is desperately needed right now. That message, I don't know if it got to everybody, probably it didn't, but, so, I mean, I don't think that every no vote was just because of the state either, so I don't know.
I don't think so, I think there was lots of other things going on. Brandon, there was that whole, everything was going on in Brandon about their budget, and Brandon is one of our biggest towns, so if they all vote, if they're all mad at one thing, then they may be mad at the other thing and be like, "No," all the way across.
We don't know how each town votes, right?
I, we can't because it's co-mingled.
Right, right.
But I do know, in speaking with lots of people who have come through my office recently, that that's what they did. And they want to know where we're headed, and, you know, I couldn't really say. I mean, would I love to see a 5% increase? Because that's what we kind of promised, before Act 127, or before that's all. But even then, that's cutting out, you know, 7%, almost 8%. And you see what that looks like on this piece of paper, and that's not, I don't think that's good for our kids.
I would say, you know, two things. One, I spoke to several parents about world language sort of after that, that board meeting. And we did sort of hear the message from some teachers, some board members, some parents, and we didn't eliminate world language. But what I said to that parent is, just so you know, there are ways to sort of share your priorities with the school. Voting the budget down is never going to add things back. And now we're sort of in the position where we're talking about real cuts. The likelihood of elementary world language staying in at this juncture feels like a long shot. And not only because we're Policy Governance Board, but just generally, the governance structure doesn't, and it isn't appropriate for us to sort of cherry pick because what Barbara prioritizes and wants to see in her school is not necessarily the same thing that Fernanda wants to see in her school. So if we open up too much to say, what's important to you, we're gonna get fights, right? Like, everybody is sort of, I'm fighting for my kids and my school, or I'm fighting for tech ed, or I'm fighting for, that's sort of why we go to our, our staff, our administrators, and we have ways for parents to sort of share their priorities. I'm not saying no to a, a community forum if it can get, if it can happen soon. I think there's always value in hearing from, from people. But the conversation can't be, what do you want to see stay? What do you want to see go? Because Natalie's gonna fight for something very different than Fernanda's gonna fight for. And we don't always want to hear, only pay attention to the loudest voices in the room or the people who show up.
Natalie, might, I mean, are you looking for a number or, like, cut $250,000? Are you looking for something specific? Because my question would be, what is feasible? What can we feasibly, reasonably cut from the budget? That would maintain, you know, what we need for our kids.
Well, so, and I, we did include, from Brett had a request, we did include, and it's in one of your supplemental docs, all of the federally funded employees. And it shows you who continues, who's eliminated, or who's, like, whose grant continues, whose position is eliminated, and who sort of has picked up in either the Otter Valley Union budget, the RNESU budget, or a different sort of grant. So we did sort of share that for you. That's a tough question, Natalie, because first, we didn't pad our budgets. We, although I would say, again, like, world, elementary world language is a perfect place where there definitely were people who said, this isn't a priority, let's reduce. But the opposite happened, right? There are people who say, this should be a priority. So there's not a single person or program that's a part of the budget, as was defeated, that we felt like, yeah, we're sort of leaving this in here as a placeholder so we can go back and cut. So every reduction that we make at this point to people and programs will have an impact. Tomorrow evening, when we sit with RNESU, Central Office will talk about things that are gonna have an impact, but things if you're asking us to and directing us to, these would sort of be the things that we feel like are first here, we're gonna feel, but isn't necessarily doomsday scenario. We've asked the same thing from all of our building principals as well, and they've shared with Brenda and Debbie and myself, things from supplies to shuttle runs, to people in programs, to reducing people in programs. So we sort of have that crafted. But again, because we didn't pad the budget, we do need direction from each of the boards to say, here are sort of the parameters. This is what we feel comfortable with you putting out in front of the voters.
I keep going back to the information that can help people understand why the numbers are what they are and making that super visible. Because when you look at all these little numbers and you expect people to understand the common level of appraisal and the impact of that, plus the, the fact that, you know, there is that...
The number they see is the last one.
All they see is the last. And so part of me wants to put together a visual, a really clear visual that gets sent to every home, that, that states the things we know that are out of, you know, that we just mentioned. Brenda, you, you mentioned several that I think would be really helpful for people to know why things are the way they are, right? The fact is, every town right now is going, is going to be going through appraisals. And the money, who's, how that money's gonna get charged is gonna shift, right? And, and, and people will battle that out with their own appraisal boards, I would imagine, as to whether or not that's a fair or not price, right? But, but next year, our rate would look so much better because all of our common level of appraisals are gonna be at 100%.
You hope they will be at 100%.
Most, or, or not, or, no, because they're not gonna finish them.
They're not gonna, there's not...
They're gonna be two years, right.
If you're looking for a new line of work, become an appraiser.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna be, right, it's gonna be a multiple-year project.
So I think you're gonna see these continue to go down. Maybe, maybe a smaller town can get a reappraisal, kind of squeezed in. I don't know. But, you know, they're really all booking out, so I don't, you know...
But that, but that is a reality, that everybody's, that, that money will shift, right? So I, that's one thought that I'm having, is like, how do we bring that point of reality in how difficult the situation is with just a few points, three? You know, not, not this whole thing of numbers. The other thing that I know is incredibly unpopular and probably incredibly difficult, for my first eight years of work, I was pink slipped every year. Every year, I received a RIF notice and then would be rehired, right? And that gave, because some are grant positions that didn't come through, some are, you know, and that gave the administration time to make decisions and, and be able to really think about that. So if we're working against the clock, you know, I'm not really sure. It's not a good practice. It's a painful practice. And it probably, we are in a situation now where there are more jobs available and fewer people to do them. And so probably, it would work against us to think about buying that time. I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that. But that is a safety mechanism that you have to be able to make more thoughtful decisions as you go along, right? And there is a piece that is attrition, you know, just naturally, things shift. But I don't, you know, I don't think it's good practice. I'm just saying, that is a way to buy time and buy space for making better decisions. I, you know, we did that with, I mean, like I said, it, it was for eight years of my career that happened every time. Did I like it? Not at all.
And another point, it'd be hard to get across to the public, for as I'm concerned, unless I'm seeing this wrong, but, so the budget is based basically up, or partially off of your property values, is what we're saying, right?
The tax rate is... Tax rate, yes.
So we, so we must have some very high-valued properties in Vermont, because we're number five in the country as far as per pupil, what it costs to put them through school. Fifth.
So that is a different definition, right? So property taxes are based on the state's property wealth that sets the tax rate. You know, in simplest terms, it's not as simple as Brett already pointed out. So unlike, unlike a town, a town takes your grand list and you divide it by what the town wants to spend. So the, the town approves a budget of 300, you know, 3,200, and they divide it by their grand list of 3,200, they have a tax rate of a dollar. It's as simple as that. Schools are not that way. Schools are based on the state one. The data that you read about our education spending per pupil is based on our budget divided by our number of kids. And the fact that we're a rural state means we're always gonna have, not to talk numerators and denominators, because I heard what Brett said, but we have less in the denominator, so our spending per pupil is always higher. They're not, they don't equate that way.
So you asked for some general guidelines, and I'll throw out a couple. After, you know, decades in higher education, I've seen this pattern over and over, and it's nationally, I mean, it's very common knowledge, that faculty and staff generally get cut before administration. In fact, administration always grows and, and, and in terms of both personnel and percentages of expenditures. And I can tell you that the effect on morale when staff and faculty get cut and administration grows is poisonous. And, and the resentment is, is just permeates the culture. So I would urge you to spread the pain and to make sure that Central Office feels it as well. And that, and that everyone knows that, that the pain's being spread. I, I think that's a necessary aspect of leadership that's gonna be important.
Do you agree with you, Kev?
The other thought that I have is that maybe we want to look at, and I think the, the chart that we just received that Brett asked for is gonna be helpful. How do we compare in 2024, or 2025 to 2019? What, what did we add during COVID that we can subtract now? What effect will it have on our children and on the education we're providing for them? So those are, again, very general. I have no, I don't have my green eye shades on and, you know, and I, as you said, my priorities and Natalie's or anyone else's might be very different. So, but those, in terms of general guidelines, those are my thoughts.
How many positions have we gained, like you said, from 19 up until now with the ESER funds?
Oh, so much has changed.
That whole list in the packet, yeah.
Well, yeah, but some of them say, some of them say that they're eliminated already, so I have a hard time telling how many we had versus how many we have.
Those are to be eliminated, right?
I don't know.
There are some that are...
Shifting.
Yeah, there's shifts. Yeah, there are some that are eliminated, some that are reduced, some that are continuing because their grant continues, like, we're giving you all federal dollars. And then some that are included and moved over to the OBU or RNESU budget. And those are, I mean, that's, but just, but just because they're showing up here doesn't mean that they are post-COVID, right? Like, we've always received federal grants, like, before...
So those aren't grant funded. The ones that we have to pick up the dime for now, do you have any, how many, how many of those or what the dollar amount is?
There's like four or five. If you look here, there's like four or five.
Yeah.
I was looking at those.
Anything that says added or added to RNESU or...
Yeah, so there's an assistant principal at Neshabie.
I'm just curious, how many?
No, it's like four or five.
50,000, 50,000, I mean, of dollars.
I think, though, the difference between 2019 and 2024 is huge. And so the staff...
Positions that were moving.
So even though they were brought in on an ESER, doesn't mean that somebody else...
Yeah, I'm looking at Otter Valley and RNESU. Those are the people, I'm only looking at the ESER III grant, and so there were eight positions that...
I was gonna ask that, if you could explain what all these different grants are, because I don't know what an IDEA B or Act 112 ESER, or an ESER Climate, or any of that stuff is.
Do you want to go ahead, Sam?
I, I certainly can. I have to ask, what, what does that, what, how does that help us?
That's what I'm wondering.
Well, because IDEA B, the grants...
They continue.
They continue, so those are not in the budget.
Special education.
Special ed.
That's special ed, and it's, they're not in the budget because they're, they're grant-funded.
And the ESERS are just ESER.
Which goes away.
Which goes away.
Act 112 ESER goes away, ESER Climate goes away, SWP CFP is Schoolwide Plans, which are part of consolidated federal programs, which we always get, although the money, you can't ever guarantee from year to year. That's sort of a moving target, but that's not new. That's always sort of been. And what we've historically funded with CW, or with school-wide programming and consolidated federal programs are interventionists and coaches, and that sort of continues as well.
Because that includes Title I, which is basically a literacy grant. So that's how those get funded.
So that money is usually both the CFP...
So really, you need to be looking at the ESER-funded ones, right?
Right, they're all gone.
We need to be looking at the ones that say added to OBU budget, right?
Well, that's what you're wanting to do, yes.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what you're asking. It's those four, it's five, maybe, that were under ESER and added to the budget. So that would be an instructional coach, school nurse, social emotional learning professional, teacher literacy interventionist, and that's it.
But also, we're only, we're only eliminating three of them, right?
This, these are, one was eliminated, another was eliminated. I don't know if it was OBU budget, I'm guessing.
Well, that's, none of it was our budget.
But I, I mean, I don't know what, the question really is, are we just looking at these people, right? I don't know if that's really how we want to, want to think about this. And if we're talking about eliminating people, is that what we're talking about? That's what we have to be talking about. Are we talking about eliminating people? I don't really care if it's this list. Who are we gonna eliminate? Why are we gonna eliminate them? What will the impact be on that elimination? It doesn't matter what, if they're on this list or not.
And they're, and it's important to know that things that, for instance, would show up in school-wide plans or CFP doesn't necessarily mean that it's safe in the conversation. We might decide to shift something around, right? Like, so there are certain positions that can be funded through federal dollars and others that can't, right? So if we're saying, for instance, like, here's just a, a good conversation, we want to hang on to world language, we couldn't add that to the consolidated federal program. If we wanted to reduce, you know, if we wanted to save a classroom teacher, we also couldn't add that to consolidated federal programs, right? Those are a part of our normal operating costs, and that's not something we could put in there. So there are some things, just because you see it here, doesn't even mean that it's a priority above other things that are OBU-funded. This is just the stream that funds them, if that sort of makes sense.
I, I just think it's helpful because we see a budget that says what we're adding to each school, right? But we don't have the context of what we're losing, or, I mean, a lot of those positions already existed, right? So that's why I wanted to see this, was to kind of get a picture of what, because we see half of it, but we don't see the other half.
The other thing is that without having the whole context, I don't know that I want to be discussing which positions or whatever, you know, that's, that's you.
That's administration.
I, I love, I mean, I love, I agree with what Kevin said about the fact that it has to be like across the board and not, not just in a particular section of staff, right? That, that, I think is important to say. What I cannot get to is like, is there a bottom dollar? Like, will it make a difference whether it's 200,000 or, or 500,000? Like, is there a magic number that the, that the voters will come back to? Or is it, you know, and that we can live with, right? Or is it that, again, the information needs to be delivered a little bit differently and a little more...
My question is, do we have to look at reductions in just employees? Can we look at not paying for maintenance in something for a year? Or are there other ways?
So Central Office looks at that, and so do each of the buildings. Like, for instance, one principal is talking about a bus run. One principal's talking about supply dollars. So nothing, nothing is safe and nothing is automatically sort of on the table. Because I would prioritize that over staff.
But those are pennies, as compared.
Those are...
Our supply dollars, I, I feel like those are already limited. We've had conversations with our principal that there's not even money for school field trips at the end of the year.
And when we talk about things that are sort of out of our control, health insurance increases, for instance, supplies, the increase just in supply costs, like, even if you level funded it, most teachers are making reductions in their supply purchases just because the cost of sort of doing business has gone up. And sort of back to Kevin's point as well, we are talking very seriously about reductions at Central Office and to administrations sort of across the board as well. Like I said, nothing is on the table, but nothing is off the table as well.
Could we set like two benchmarks and say like, let's see a budget that goes down by 1%? Just throw that out there as a number. Or, and then also one that reduces it below a 10% increase. I mean, could we just ask...
Haven't we already seen that with this? I mean, because again...
Right, but I...
Or do you want... Or do you want to see how that affects your.
I can see a number, I can do the math, but what does that translate to, to positions, right? So I would want to see from the administration, a presentation to say, here's what 1% less looks like. And by the way, here's what your other benchmark of, I don't know, 2%, I don't know, whatever it is. I'm just, I'm not.
Brenda?
So I think I like what you're saying, Brett. You know, as the person who's stressed about figuring out how to get you what you mean, respectfully, for Dana, we need you to give us a number. Because otherwise, you're asking us to guess what you think. It's your budget. You're the ones who the community looks to say, you agree this is what we should be spending. So we need the direction from you. Natalie, it depends on the number you come up with. If you say, Brenda, cut 75,000, we're probably not cutting a position. If you say, Brenda, cut 450,000, we're cutting positions. So, you know, it's, I think it's a great idea to say, if we told you to cut one cent, which is $207,000, what would it do? If you told us, you know, Lori, you said that you would ideally love the tax rate, the equalized tax rate to only go up 5%, that's $445,000. If you said, tell us these two things, that gives us something to do, and then you get to say, that's too much, that's too little, that makes me uncomfortable, that makes me comfortable. But we'd need some guidance of a number.
We've been spinning our wheels and fighting for two weeks as administrators. Because like Kevin said, these are hard conversations, and we didn't pad our budget, so these were things that our administrators believed in, in our schools. So yeah, these are tough.
What about 1% and 5%? Like, 10% sounds gigantic to me.
So 10% is gigantic, and when you say 1% or 5%, do you mean one cent or five?
One cent, five cents.
So one cent is 207,000, five cents is a million.
Oh, geez.
So I'm.
I think you have to.
So how does one cent affect this percent, the education spending?
13 cents.
For long-term weighted average ADM, I don't know, I'd have to go through the math.
Would it be not like minimal? Because I wonder if people see an increase of 13 points up whatever percent and.
So if you go back to the front.
That throws them off, and they don't want to vote for it.
So if you go back to the front page, the one with the shading on it.
Yes.
When you look at the percentage, so what voters see is a number. Whether they do the math or not, I don't know. But yes, the total budget is 12.71%. But if you jump down to the line, it's in red on mine, I apologize, I don't know how to use a copier, because I tried to make it color for you guys. If you jump to the red, you'll see that we're at, when it comes to a tax rate, we're at 6.74%. So.
But the increase from the budget last year was.
12%.
Yeah, so.
But we gained some capacity, yeah.
Is 6.7. So because our capacity increased because of the new pupil count. So.
I get that. I don't think our public gets that.
That's possible.
And that all they're seeing is that the budget increased a certain amount. It increased 12%.
So I think once, I think once you agree on.
On that number, it's 247,000.
Once you agree on the parameters, and we sort of share with you on, say, April 2nd, here's what we've got, right? Like, here's scenario one, here's scenario two. The next part is, what message do we get out? How do we get it out? What's our timeline? Like, let's, it's not the annual meeting anymore, it's a budget informational meeting.
Right.
We're going to make T-shirts for Brenda, right? Like, all of those conversations, I think, are things, but we just need to know the parameters and.
Right, so I'm just curious if, if we were to reduce it, so it said 11% increase, are people still, like, will that really matter?
We don't know.
We don't know.
But I think it's that with the information. And the fact is that we're sitting here making the effort, right? And realizing that the effort gives you very little. And I think that that's what the town, what people need to know. This is outside of what we can manage to make it palatable for everybody. And then we have to emphasize those things.
Right, like the Brenda's chart, which is one cent reduction, here's what your savings actually is.
Exactly. This is what it is in dollars, and this is what it is in tax rate.
Like, in programs and people and.
That's why understanding the ESAR jobs is important for us, right? Because we need to be champions for whatever budget we put forward. When someone comes up to me and says, why do we need to add this position here? I don't know, I think it already exists, but I don't know.
So we have a black box, and the black box is what the voters want. Because we can say all day long, this is necessary, and we really want to prioritize that. And everything everyone says, has said tonight, I agree with. The question is, what will voters accept? And was it four years ago, Lori, when the budget failed because the?
Yeah, it was four years ago because it was another presidential primary.
Yeah, so four years ago, it failed, but not by much, and we collectively decided that there was confusion about people not getting budgets mailed to them. I don't know, maybe the weather was bad too, I can't remember. We decided, the voters, you know, we didn't really hear back from the voters in a complete way. And cut the budget minimally and resubmitted it and it passed. My sense now is that that won't work.
That we aren't, we weren't close.
Yeah.
We need to be realistic about that. We were not close.
People are upset that, I mean, everything is jumping, food is jumping, everything.
It's not just budgets.
No, it's everything, and the problem is, is that people's capacity to continue to provide more is waning, it's very real.
And it's not a message just to us and our budget, it's a message to the state that these formulas don't work, you know?
Right.
And that the impact on them is, on individuals is too great. So we're paying the price for the fact that we have a system that isn't working for the voters, you know? That's the situation we're in. So I feel like we need to do our due diligence and do a better job of explaining those difficulties in three points, no more, you know, like, and then try again. And make it really clear that voting it down for us right now isn't going to help us solve the bigger problem, which is, needs to be solved in a different room, you know?
In my pillar.
In my pillar. It's not, it's not something we can fix.
They seem to be doing such a great job. I think we should definitely trust them with it.
You know, but that's just, that's just the, I think we need to do due diligence. And I think due diligence is to look at one cent and maybe five cents, and then see, see what that does, and then just go from there.
And that's something that's out in the public too, right? I mean.
And we say that to them, you know, we're doing this.
See how much this hurts if we go down five cents.
Yeah, but I just, yeah. It's not a, I mean, it's, that's, you know, we're the, we're the baby in the bathtub, right? Like, there's, we're throwing away the baby in the bathtub because it's just not, in the bathwater, because it's just not, you know, they don't control that.
I mean, is it real, because I'm thinking, what kind of work does that take for the administration to figure it out, five cents?
Yeah, we can. But I want to tell you what that's honestly going to do.
It's a million dollars.
It's a million dollars. It's honestly going to go to a lot of people and say, you likely, you might not be employed. And if you're not willing to say that, don't do that. Don't, don't put our staff through that to then say, oh, I was never going to go to 5% anyways, right?
Right.
Like, I think that would be really unfortunate for our staff, because we're not going to cut a million dollars in supplies and deferred maintenance and.
But doesn't that send a message to our public too, that cutting a million dollars means that we're cutting a bunch of people? I, I think that's what, I don't think it's what the message, yes, we don't want our staff to think that that's what the plan is, but we also need to get it out to our constituency that cutting, you know, if you want us to get down to a 2% or a 5% increase, this is what it means. This is what it means in real people. So we have to at least look at it.
And it's probably not realistic to.
I don't think we're going to go that far, but I think we have to be able to say.
You have to understand what it means.
Yes.
But to put some, put positions with it, so that, or not positions, but let them know, this is what the dollar amount is, but this is what it's going to affect. This, the program's going to affect, this is whatever. So they can actually see a million dollars affects 15 different programs that could be gone or whatever.
And how badly it affects our kids. That, that's what they need to see.
So you're, when you're saying like, they are seeing, are you saying that they're watching the board meeting on April 2nd? Are you saying that you're getting this information out there? Or are you saying that you are entertaining, like, cutting a million dollars off the budget? Like, you see what I mean? Like, those are very different conversations.
I don't, I don't think we're saying that, I think we need to look at what a million dollar looks like so we can say, this is what the impact would be.
If we said to you.
Not because we want to cut a million dollars, but because that's the impact of a million dollars. I hear what you're saying, though.
So you're saying, like, in the, like, you're saying in the presentation from Brenda, for instance, it might say, two administrators and eight classroom teachers, like, something like that.
That's what it would take, cut a million dollars.
Yeah.
If you want us to get to there, this is where it has to go. And then the schools are not going to function, so.
That's exactly what it'll take.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
But that's, but that's what we.
But that'll open somebody's eyes, because they don't, they don't know what it takes.
Right.
Like, I don't know what it takes, I'm sitting here.
Right, right.
I don't want to be too cynical about the public. But I think if you go to a lot of people on the street and say, let's say a political candidate says, I'm going to cut the Department of Housing and Urban Development by 5%, and it's, you know, it's wasted inefficiency, a lot of people will just accept that. They won't, they'll counter-argument that, oh, people will lose their jobs, that there'll be more people living in poverty who can't get any help, and all of those sorts of arguments. It's a much tougher case to make, in my opinion. So the scenario where we say, an X percent cut will do this, this, and this, I'm not sure that message will get out. I think people say, oh, they can cut X percent, that's great.
I agree with you. I agree with you. A rare occurrence, but I do. I'm like, people will say, great, cut teachers, you know, or cut administrators. I mean, I don't know that they would fully understand the impact.
There's also that other reality, right, that what percentage of voters don't have children in school?
Right, yeah.
Right, there is a large percentage of.
I think there are a lot of people who just, you know.
And I don't think it's cynicism, I think it's reality that people are tight, you know, and that they're suffering. And that they would rather see cuts that are painful than to have to suffer and perhaps not be able to afford living in the community they've always lived in, you know? I mean, that's a reality, that's not cynicism.
I want to, again, respectfully remind that there were many people on this board who said, when you took world language, I'm voting down the budget. So you go a million deep, you're going to get, you could potentially get a lot of people who say, I'm voting down the budget because it's too much. I'm voting down the budget because you took away what I thought was important. I'm voting down the budget because you affected my school. I'm voting down the budget because you didn't do enough administration. I'm voting down the budget because you didn't do enough teachers. I just want you to be cautious, because this board said that over $75,000, and you're now asking me to go for a million.
Ouch, Brenda.
So I'm inclined to keep the budget as is, but to review what it would look like with a one cent reduction, just to know. That's where I stand. Because I just don't, I don't know, I, I don't think we can make a huge reduction, and a small reduction's not going to make any difference overall.
It would be a slap in the face if we came back with the same budget.
As we're all accountable, just hope for lots of voters. That's Steve's, ain't you?
That's what I'm thinking.
They did do a community forum, though, to, they got, they, yeah, they just did one to ask their.
You think it's right to open.
And that's what I'm thinking, is that we do a forum, we do something to educate the public better about why we can't cut much, or if we're only cutting $75,000. I just, 200,000 is cutting jobs. And that's one cent.
And it's not, you know, and even if you turn it around, it's not the jobs, it's the services, right? It's, we're already struggling with.
Programs.
With programs and services that are needed.
Services our kids aren't getting.
We need to come up with something, I guess.
We, we know we, we want to try the one cent.
One is easy, yeah, let's do that.
We want to try the one cent. The one cent is doable, in regards to at least taking a look at it.
When you look at everything, Brenda, you look at class size, teacher, student.
We do.
Class size ratio, you look at all of the different positions.
And, and it's not me, it is definitely.
Well, no, I know, when I say you, it's just that you're the one putting it all together. So.
Or, or are there ways that we can, so we have open positions, can we not fill those positions? Is that one way?
And there, that already, that already happens. And that, when you, when you look at the grant list, you see that if we couldn't fill it this year, we may do without it, so we reduce it for next year.
But if it's a classroom teacher, you can't do that. You know, like, you can't leave an open position in a, in a classroom, for example.
But that is something we always look to do first.
Yes.
You know, like, like, OCA's got to have an extra classroom teacher next year, so that's open, that one we couldn't do. But this year, you can see on there, we, our homeschool coordinator became the principal of Lothrap.
Yep.
The position was.
I mean, can we do without an assistant principal or?
Like, back to Kevin's point, we are looking at all administrative positions as well.
Okay.
But we need parameters.
I was going to say, so you want like, one cent and focus your cuts on something other than primary education, is that where you're?
I mean, you can say that.
I, I don't know.
I'm just more looking for the, the number that you would like us to sort of shoot for, to be able to bring back and be both responsible to your voters and responsible to keeping the schools sort of high functioning. And if that's one cent and five cents, if it's one cent and three cents, sort of present us scenarios, if it's just one cent.
What number do you want us to say?
I wanted the budget to pass. That's, I mean, it's as tough for them as it is for us, you know?
I think one cent.
When we were first, you weren't here, Kristen, I don't believe at the time, but when we were first, brand new, act, after Act 46, we had to entertain some cuts at that time, Brenda, you were here, and you gave us three options. Do you remember that? One of them was.
I don't remember yesterday.
Okay, well, I'm just wondering if that may be the way to go.
Two options.
Well, the only reason there were three was just because there was the middle of the road, there was this and this, and what we decided, and in that discussion, we, one of the things that we were looking at cutting was tech ed. And that was the one thing we refused to lose at that, you know? And we ended up cutting something else, so.
I mean, what if we looked at like 75?
Quite well, Lori.
Yeah, yeah.
What if we look at like, reduction of 75,000, 125 and 50, I don't know.
Or just a list of possible cuts.
I don't want to go above that, I mean, that's just not realistic, to go above the one cent.
If you just get a list to say, we could save 30,000 if we switch to these light bulbs, or we could save 50,000 if we eliminate this bus, or, I don't know, we could do it that way too.
I just, I will tell you that schools live like that always. We're always doing those things, not just, you know? I'm not sure.
I think that you, you brought up a good point, you know, when we gave multiple scenarios, that there was something that you didn't want us to touch. And, you know, if you're going to tell us you didn't want, you don't want us to touch world language, you should put that in whatever motion you come up with as well.
I think it gets dangerous when we start to advocate for what we think should stay.
You know, I really, I really do.
I don't think we can know what the schools need.
If you cut the bus program, tell them they're going to bring your own kids here.
That's not possible.
Kids won't show up.
Just your kids.
And imagine all the disciplinary problems you could.
A lot of places.
Well, I think we have to look at higher than one.
One cent or 1%?
Sorry, the, the one cent, the 207,000. If only so that when we have these conversations with people, we can say, this is what you'll be losing. So I would suggest looking at one and three.
Three will also get you closer to that 5% cap that we had thought Act 127 would have provided.
I can, I can stand behind that.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, I guess with the extra five, that might be the plan.
And that doesn't mean we're taking it, it just means we're looking at it.
Does three get us close to what our increase was last year? Or is it more than that?
Cent or percent?
I don't know, the cents and percents thing, it's confusing to me, so.
But it's, I mean, it's still, it's a $600,000 reduction, so it's real people.
Yeah.
But we, is that, are those the parameters? Because we can go back.
I mean, it represents significant work on your team's part to do two different numbers. And then the, then the flip side of that is, we can then honestly say we looked at it. We can say, it was a terrible thing, and we can't, you know, in good conscience, go with it, but we can say, we asked for the numbers, we looked at the numbers, and we'd have to be crazy to go with it. I mean, we, you know, I don't, I don't like the idea of the 3%.
You'd be able to quantify what you give up.
Yeah, yeah, and then we can say, look, you know, 1% is really all we could, not even in the best of consciences, go with, but-
3% or 3 cents?
You guys gave us a mandate, and so here we are.
Okay.
3 cents.
So 1 cent, if I'm saying 3 cents.
So it's 621.
Yeah.
621,000.
Okay.
All right, I think-
Yeah, and again, recognizing this represents a lot of work for you.
We don't need a motion.
No, just parameters.
Paula wants to say something.
Um, no, I, I hear a lot of stuff, I get it all, but there's some things I don't get. No matter what we do, our taxes are going to go up in property, so, um, I'm torn as a person, because I know, and cuts have to be, you know, I do the sports thing all the time, but sometimes teams lose players and you have to adjust. I think as a community, even though we have to, Kristen, I'm sorry, but you probably have to make big cuts, we will adapt, we will adjust as a community in our schools. You know, with what's left, I would hope maybe they, we work harder to give our kids what we need in a whole. You know, maybe it's just a big rude wake-up call all the way around. It is tough. That's just me looking at, you know, the stuff's going to have to happen, we're just going to have to sign it up. But we do, do other things in life, and hopefully come together as a community to keep providing for the kids what we need at some time, and then we might have to lose to gain.
I mean, I hear you. I understand the words that are coming out of your mouth, so yes.
I appreciate that.
I do have, I think there's another side to this, which is great, I mean, yes, the situation that we're in, but how do we advocate at the state level? I mean, this is painful, right? And what we're putting ourselves into is really difficult.
I would say that the superintendents, the finance directors, I think that there's an awful lot of chatting with-
There's got to be rumblings, because this is, this is not the way to do, this is not the way to, to do education.
Well, and not having a secretary of education for over a year.
A year, right.
So having no one fight for schools, having, again, a governor who goes out in front of the news and says, vote no, because that's the right thing to do, that none of those help any of us pass school budgets. It's actually shocking that only 30 went down across the state.
Out of how many?
There was 90 that passed, 30 that went down.
I'm doing some quick math.
Okay.
You will be, because I'm already conscripting you to write the three points.
I'll give you a bell.
I'm recalculating the, um-
We need a free PR team to go out and, you know.
Exactly.
All right, so board vacancies. Something we all need to know about this is that we cannot fill any of our board, vacant board seats until after we pass a budget, because the only way to fill these right now until we have a passed budget is to actually allow people to go out and get the required signatures, and run for the, run for the seat that they want, and they, that would require 60 days, and we don't really have 60 days, so.
What about write-ins, or?
Uh, no, so this will not even be on the, it can't be on the ballot at all, the only thing on the ballot will be the budget. And so, I have received one letter of interest for a seat, however, I will go back to that person and let them know that we can't fill the seat until after we pass our budget. And even then, I also told this person that we would usually request letters of interest, and so we wouldn't even entertain this person's letter until we put it out to everyone. Fair?
Fair.
Okay.
And no quorum, still stays seven?
That's right, quorum still stays seven, so if you're not going to be here on time, or whatever, we don't, you know, please let me know.
Communication is going to be important.
Yeah, all right, Brenda already went over the all funds, if you weren't here, sorry. Consideration of environment policy, I put this back on the budget just because I was kind of hoping we would hear from Jeremy, I did not hear from him, and so, well-
We'll be agendaing the budget.
Uh, right, oh, sorry, did I say that wrong? My bad.
Suppose we drop that for now, we've got enough problems.
All right, is everybody okay with just dropping that for now? All right, gone. All right, letter to the AOE regarding RNESU representation, the letter went out to the AOE, it is now in the hands of the lawyers, and we won't, we wait to hear from them, so.
When you say lawyers, the state's lawyers?
The state, the state board of ed's lawyers, yes, they have a whole team.
Sure they do.
So, Attorney Simmons, I believe is what we're waiting, yeah, maybe they need to make some cuts.
Yeah, there you go.
It's the timeline expected.
There is, there is no timeline, so, yeah.
Hell freezing over.
Well, we just don't push, that's the one thing. All right, next thing, other business, is there any other business for future consideration that we should be thinking about for future board meetings? I don't think at the moment there is, but I think we got enough with the budget. Okay, we also need to confirm April 16th, because that is one of our board meetings, which is during school vacation. And if it is changed, we need to consider an earlier date, because Brenda will be bringing us summer project planning, hopefully, maybe.
And if you do not agree on the budget on April 2nd, I would suggest that you need your second meeting to happen the 8th or 9th.
Okay.
What was the date, you were looking to have a vote?
The 30th.
Oh, of April.
We just have to warn it.
Right.
Yeah.
And have our informational meeting.
So we could, if you wanted, wrap our second meeting into, if we needed a, a meeting on April 8th or 9th, whatever, we could wrap this all together. But I would want to know what your pleasure was.
Well, given that it's hard to get a quorum, I, I would, I wouldn't, I would be, prefer to have it not be during break.
Not during break, okay.
Just knowing that it's-
Yeah, if you put it on the schedule now, people can plan for it.
So we should have it seven days earlier then, which would be the 9th?
And then that takes care of two things.
Is that okay with everyone? That'll be, okay. All right, so we're moving it to April 9th.
16th.
What would the date be for the meeting before the vote? Get that on the schedule too, right?
We are, actually, she already has it planned.
The 22nd or the 23rd, probably the 23rd, 23rd or 24th?
Okay.
That week. Well, it's an exact timeline, people-
Right, it has to be five days, at least five days before the vote, which is the 30th, so.
I'm not here the 23rd.
Okay.
It's just the informational meeting.
We really just need Brenda to vote for it.
No, okay.
I'm not here the 23rd.
Okay.
What day is that?
The 23rd is a Tuesday. All right.
Well, that's interesting, CSD has a break the week after.
Oh, yes, they're, they're not the same, that's right.
I don't know, they didn't, they didn't agree. Did you agree? What, the 23rd, you want to do your?
Is there, I, well, I assumed everyone was okay with the 23rd. Nobody said no.
We don't need quorum for that, right?
No, we don't, so if you're not there-
That's an informational meeting?
Yeah, just like the annual, yeah.
Get at least one, don't just make me go.
I'll be busy, sorry.
Charlene will be there for that, I'll be there for that.
Yeah, Charlene will be there, she'll be all set. All right, and the superintendent's report was already done.
It's all hatred.
Yeah, I know, it's all good. So our next board meeting is Tuesday, April 2nd. Please, if you're not going to be able to make it, please let me know, or please try to make it via Zoom, because we need to have a quorum. And we can, only one person can only be absent. So, and then our other one will be April 9th.
April 22nd, you just said?
23rd.
23rd, I thought, I don't know.
That's all right.
I thought you said 22nd, I answered that.
Uh, 2nd, 9th, and 23rd, and 30th.
And 23rd is the information.
Yeah, 23rd is the informational meeting, 30th is the day we vote.
Is that still at 6 o'clock, or what time is the informational meeting?
Sure, we'll make it 6, just for you, Fernanda.
Well, I'm on vacation that week.
All right, and then we do need to have executive session. It's currently 8 o'clock, so I would entertain a-